I would like to call the Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Potem Jones.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here. We'll have the invocation by Kingsley Okariki, the Finance Director, and a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Broadwater.
Careful, please, Stanley. Let's wait. Dear Lord, we ask for your blessings over this meeting tonight. In the midst of the busy and complex world we live, let your will be clear and let your will be done. Amen.
Amen.
Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I see we have some presentations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to make the presentations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fortell. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council takes great pleasure in recognizing two outstanding members of our community who have been chosen as the 2011 Man and Woman of the Year by the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. Would Stan Beitler and Margaret Beitler please come forward? Each year, the Chamber of Commerce recognizes, excuse me, two dedicated service-oriented individuals who consistently demonstrate community pride through volunteer efforts as the Man and Woman of the Year. In its 104-year history, the Beitlers are only the second set of husband and wife to receive this prestigious honor from our Chamber of Commerce. It is the city's privilege to honor these two outstanding residents. We'll begin with the Man of the Year, Stan Beitler. Stan has lived in Garden Grove for nearly 80 years and has served this city both professionally and personally for 70 of those years. He began giving back to his community through the United Methodist Church. Stan still dedicates time and energy to their causes. Stan has devoted over five decades of charitable service to the Garden Grove Masonic Lodge. Stan's commitment to serving his hometown also led him to a volunteer position with a group that would soon become a profession for him, what was then the Garden Grove Volunteer Fire Department. When it became an official city department, Stan was one of the first hired. He retired after 32 years of service in public safety with the Garden Grove Fire Department. Several other deserving local nonprofits have benefited from Stan's love of selfless service. They are the Garden Grove Boys Club, the Garden Grove Historical Society, and the Garden Grove Lions Club. Throughout his distinguished career of service, Stan has had his lifelong friend by his side, his wife Margaret, which leads us now to turn the spotlight on our Woman of the Year, Margaret Beitler. As you might guess, Margaret also shares a love for service to Garden Grove. She too has been a lifelong volunteer for the Garden Grove United Methodist Church, chairing countless committees for their fundraisers. Margaret served her community in a professional capacity as an employee with the Garden Grove Unified School District. She retired after an impressive 37-years career with the district. Since Margaret was born and raised in Garden Grove, she has a special interest in its history, so her volunteer work for our historical society has been a real labor of love for her. She was one of the very first members and served on the Board of Directors as well. Margaret's can-do spirit has lent itself to many other service clubs in our city, many of whom she still volunteers for. They include the Garden Grove Assistance League, the Women's Division of the Chamber of Commerce, Garden Grove High School Alumni Association. Margaret says she feels truly blessed to be a Garden Grove resident and that giving back to her community is just one way to show her hometown pride. Stan, Margaret, at this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present each of you with a certificate and a small gift in honor of receiving the important distinction of Man and Woman of the Year. The City of Garden Grove congratulates both of you for this well-deserved achievement and commends you for your noble efforts in bringing out the best in our community.
Margaret? Thank you for everything that you've done, everything that you've done for the city. I bet you're, is anybody else, can anybody else in this room say that they were born in Garden Grove? Okay, I didn't think so. All right. Anyway, no, thanks for staying here, thanks for everything you do, and believe me, we're not letting you rest. There's a lot more things you're gonna do for us. Thank you.
We might run out of time.
No, 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 no.
Stan? Thanks for everything you've done. Well deserved. I knew that was gonna happen. Be careful with this, there's no, it just kinda flops, so maybe hold it on your, on your thumb. We'll turn around and have a picture taken, and then we'd like you, if you want to, to say a few words.
One, two, three. Take one more. Go, one, two. Nope.
I thank you again. Microphone okay? Thank you.
There we go. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council, my wife voted me as Speaker of the House tonight. Tonight only. So, I'm speaking for both of us, so we sure appreciate this honor, and it makes it doubly good for us because it came from the agencies which we took a part in, and we'd like to thank that perhaps during our careers that we had little part in forming Garden Grove's policies and the way they did work, and we certainly appreciate all the many things that is done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Okay, we have another community spotlight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and Susan will give the spotlight as well.
This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to shine the community spotlight on a group of incredibly dedicated volunteers who have worked tirelessly to uphold the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival's reputation as a signature event in our community and the Western United States. Will Mike Fenderson, the 2011 Strawberry Festival Association President, please come forward? Also, will the association members join us tonight, who are joining us tonight, please stand and be recognized? Each year, community leaders volunteer hundreds of hours planning and coordinating one of the largest festivals in the Western United States, the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival. This festival celebrates the agricultural history of the city, highlighting the role of the strawberry in that tradition. The event's rides, parade, contests, and entertainment attract visitors not just from our community, but from across the state and beyond. In fact, the 53rd Annual Festival, held for four days over the Memorial Weekend, attracted 250,000 visitors from as far away as Washington. In keeping with tradition, the festival opened one day early so over 2,000 mentally and physically challenged children could enjoy a full, free day of rides, food, and fun. The nonprofit Strawberry Festival Association has raised well over $5 million for local groups since its inception in 1958. Locally, some of the deserving charities benefiting from this incredible generosity include the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove and Kiwanis Land, as well as many homeless shelters and victims of domestic violence agencies. This year, festival attendees helped the association raise $120,000, which is well above last year's total of $80,000. In fact, this was the best year ever for money taken in from the carnival rides, and all of those funds go directly to the Garden Grove community to help service clubs continue to assist all cultures and ages to lead better lives. Many local nonprofit groups also benefit from the sales made at the food booths at the festival. They reported an increase in this year's revenue, which exceeded last year's total of $360,000. Those are amazing figures. That success can be attributed to the commitment of each and every one of the association members. Mike, at this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present a gift of appreciation to you on behalf of the 2011 Strawberry Garden Grove Festival Association. We congratulate the association on their best fundraising year yet and thank them for keeping the needs of this community first in their efforts and hearts.
Start piling up.
Yep.
You get all this. Okay, go ahead. Come on. It'll be on eBay before tonight's over.
Where do you think we got it?
One, two, three. Take one more. One, two, three.
Now, if you can talk without moving your hands, you can go with that.
That'll be the thing.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of the festival board and associates, I thank you very much for the recognition. We did work hard this year, and as Susan said, we were very successful. I would like to thank the city council for your support in letting us open early on Friday. We think we raised an extra $20,000 with just that two hours. I'd like to thank Matt, City Manager, for all the staff assistance, especially Janet, who is our liaison. She comes to all our meetings and is very helpful. And Heidi, in the insurance, she is a big help to us also. One of the things that I do as president, or am obligated to do, is give a gift to each board member and associate, and this year's gift was so popular, I thought, no, really, I thought it would be nice to recognize the mayor for two reasons. One, representing the council, but also the mayor comes to the cake-cutting every year. He's on that stage until all the cake is gone with his wife Sandy serving the cake, so this is kind of a dual gift, something I'm sure you and your wife Sandy and the entire city will enjoy, the same gift that I gave to all the board members and associates. So, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the board?
Is it ticking? Don't come here. Okay. You want me to save the ribbon? You want it back for Christmas?
Good idea.
If this hadn't have been so, so popular with the board, I don't think I would have, I don't think I would have. This is exactly what each board member got, and they were as thrilled as I'm sure they're gonna be.
I hope yours wasn't the same as mine. It's all broken. Seven years of bad luck for you.
We was gonna ask the director, City Manager, to find some appropriate place to put it in City Hall, but with that crack, I don't think I will. Again, Mr. Mayor, thank the city for all your support.
At least that thought was there, so thank you.
That thought was there. It's a labor of love for us, and a lot of nonprofit Garden Grove organizations are gonna benefit again this year because of the hard work of this board and your Garden Grove Strawberry Festival.
Thank you very much. Yeah, for those in the audience that weren't lucky enough to get one, it's a picture of Mike. It's a picture of Frankie. If you want one, there's plenty available. Not on eBay, though, huh? Okay, this time I'll open all communications for the council and the agency. All right, Benny Diaz and Misha Hauser wanna speak together.
Wait, don't go. Where are you going?
You know how to clean a room, Benny.
Don't count my minutes.
Time's up.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Wilson.
Good evening, distinguished members of our city council, Mayor Bill Dalton. Thank you for being very open to our community, and I think the City of Garden Grove is blessed having you for the many years that you have been mayor for our city, and I thank you for that on behalf of the Latino community. And again, for the record, I wanted to state my name. My name is Benny Diaz. I am the director of Lulac in California. I represent 120 local councils throughout the state and more than 15 educational centers. And I also happen to be president of the Orange County Lulac Foundation, and also an active member of the Garden Grove Lulac Council. I came this evening to address to you upon an important issue that is concerning our community. We love our city very much. We pay our taxes here. Our kids are attending our local schools in Garden Grove. We own houses, we own businesses. Our kids play in the baseball and soccer in our beautiful parks. We have a very fine police department and fire department, and, but something is missing in that beautiful picture, and that picture is that we don't have no Latino representation in our city. And that community needs to be represented, like the brothers and sisters of our, or other members of our beautiful tapestry of ethnicities, like the Vietnamese community, the Korean community, and so forth. And so we feel in the Latino community that we don't have that representation here. And I know you have worked very hard, Mr. Mayor, in trying to reach our community, and for that I am grateful to you, but still, the issue is still there. Yeah. So, I came here because members are asking us to do something about it, and what we wanted to ask you is to see if we can have our, in our coming election, to be done by words. We have our lawyers, the staffs, researchers, and members ready to help you to achieve this goal. Allow me for that to introduce Misha Hauser, one of our Lulac members, distinguished members here in Garden Grove, and also the outreach coordinator for this project.
Good evening. It's great to see you up there, Chris. Dear Mayor Dalton and Garden Grove City Council members, I'm just gonna read this into the record so that others can hear it.
The whole thing?
Just the letter part. The attachments are just there. As a longtime resident of East Central Garden Grove, we're speaking today on behalf of creating a ward system for electing council members in our city. Over the years, it's been exciting to see more diverse representation on our council as local Korean and Vietnamese voters have organized and turned out to vote and elect candidates that represented their communities. However, one constituency in our memory has never been represented, our Latino residents, who represent the largest group by ethnicity in our city at 39.1%. This is a glaring inequity in our city's government. There have also been few, if any, council members elected who have been residents of either the east or the west side of our fair city. We wouldn't say that our council has not been in touch with these neighborhoods when making policy and development decisions, but there has not been an elected who is directly responsible to these residents. For the residents of these areas, the common perception is that they're not being represented fairly. There may be many reasons for the discrepancy of representation, but in our opinion, it has been largely due to the difficulty in raising enough money to be competitive that has held back many worthy candidates. We believe that there is something inherently wrong with a system that requires a candidate to raise over $100,000 to win an elected office, when the office pays 600 a month plus maybe up to $1,200 for health care and benefits. How can any of us be confident that those we elect have run for office simply because they want to serve our city while this inequity in pay versus campaign fundraising exists? For years, we've heard residents express the opinion that most of our council members are only "serving their time," end quotes, until they can amass enough money and support to run for a higher office. There are some notable exceptions sitting here before us today, but nonetheless, it is an opinion that we've heard expressed more and more over the past few election cycles. Creating a ward system would empower candidates from underrepresented communities to become elected. A smaller area requires less money for mailers, campaign materials, signs, and other expenses, making it more practical for candidates who come from these neighborhoods to be successful. It would also help to ensure that citizens in the east and the west neighborhoods and our Latino majority would be directly represented in the decision-making process of our city. For those who are listening and are not aware, according to the City of Garden Grove website, Latino citizens represent 39.1% of the population and is the largest demographic in our city, with 31.1% being Asian Pacific Islander and only 26.5% being white. The appearance of discrimination against the largest ethnic constituency in our city becomes a fact when one considers the difficulty in raising enough money to compete in city council elections on an equal basis against better-funded candidates, who for the most part are from a higher economic status and largely from Central Garden Grove. We're attaching data regarding ward systems in other cities for your reference, and in conclusion, we believe it's time for Garden Grove to address the issue of non-representation of all of our citizens, our neighborhoods at either edge, and the blatant lack of at least one Latino voice on our city council. Ensuring that all voices are heard and that all of our residents are represented should be a top priority for Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Dean Steele.
Good evening. My name is Dean Steele. I am presently Chairman of the Garden Grove Elks Bingo Committee. I have come here with our president, or as we call him, Exalted Ruler, David Stamper. I would like to speak to you this evening about our bingo program. The purpose of it is to raise funds in order to help local charities. Any profits derived from the program are deposited into a restricted account, separate from our general funds, and spent entirely for charitable purposes. Each month, a report showing the income and where the funds are donated is given to the Garden Grove Police Department. We're being confronted with increased competition for the players, lower attendance and income, along with more requests for donations. The state of California has written a new bingo regulation allowing for games to be broadcast from a remote, a remote location, allowing, along with offering increased prize money. We've been in contact with that company and explored a program offered by a company called Bingo Innovations out of Ontario, Canada, or not, California. California, I'm sorry. Can't read my own writing.
It's just a short distance. A little bit, yeah. They both start CA, so understandable.
Yeah, that's what I had. This program links several bingo operations into one broad program, broadcast over a dedicated television network. This allows them to pull the admission fees for all the players, from all the players, from all these locations, thereby offering bigger payoffs per game. The local bingo operator receives a fixed percentage of the admissions paid at their location. Also, a fixed percentage of the total admission is used to calculate the values of the games. Payment to the game winners is made by check from Bingo Innovations by certified mail. I happened to play on a Friday night at the Ontario American Legion, and I received a certified letter because I won the following Wednesday. They guaranteed that they would pay within 10 days. I received my money in five. We are requesting a change in the Garden Grove regulation in order to allow us to participate in this program. I do have copies of the new state law, along with answers to many of the questions that people ask, and it was provided by Bingo Innovations, and a model of a revised local law. For your information, if you would like to have it, your consideration would be sincerely appreciated, as our current program is in jeopardy and declining. Of course, if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, if you leave that with the city clerk, the information that you had, we'll get it later. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peggy Bergen.
Good evening, everyone. Nice, and you look lovely tonight, Dean, in that dress. But basically, just some questions on the different consent items this evening, when I was reading through the agenda for tonight, and one of the 4D on the city council consent item, professional landscaping and streetscaping, I did look up who was going to be doing this job. That was one of my concerns when I looked at some of these issues, was where, where the people were going to be coming from, and I was very, very delighted that all of the places I looked up were from, I would say, an easy drive from Garden Grove. There was no one from, you know, Sacramento or Colorado or something. This, the professional landscaping, the, basically, it's gonna be, cost is not to exceed $120,000, but not out of the general fund, but out of gas tax. So, that's kinda nice. That's money we don't have to put out to change the landscaping. Basically, they are taking it, I think, down to more of environmental-friendly landscaping. And, but my question is, this is on Harbor Boulevard, and between Garden Grove Boulevard and the northern boundaries of the city, which would be just past Chapman, now, is this going to be done before, during, or after all of the hotel activity? Because it seems to me a little bit redundant to be working on the medians of the street, which means you're gonna be tearing up all the sides of the road to do this, and then they come along with building the hotels, and there's always quite a bit of distress to the roads while they do that. And will this cost be? However, one constituency in our memory has never been represented, our Latino residents, who represent the largest group by ethnicity in our city at 39.1 percent. This is a glaring inequity in our city's government. There have also been few, if any, council members elected who have been residents of either the east or the west side of our fair city. We wouldn't say that our council has not been in touch with these neighborhoods when making policy and development decisions, but there has not been an elected who is directly responsible to these residents. For the residents of these areas, the common perception is that they're not being represented fairly. There may be many reasons for the discrepancy of representation, but in our opinion, it has been largely due to the difficulty in raising enough money to be competitive that has held back many worthy candidates. We believe that there is something inherently wrong with a system that requires a candidate to raise over $100,000 to win an elected office when the office pays 600 a month plus maybe up to $1,200 for health care and benefits. How can any of us be confident that those we elect have run for office simply because they want to serve our city while this inequity in pay versus campaign fundraising exists? For years, we've heard residents express the opinion that most of our council members are only "serving their time," until they can amass enough money and support to run for a higher office. There are some notable exceptions sitting here before us today, but nonetheless, it is an opinion that we've heard expressed more and more over the past few election cycles. Creating a ward system would empower candidates from underrepresented communities to become elected. A smaller area requires less money for mailers, campaign materials, signs, and other expenses, making it more practical for candidates who come from these neighborhoods to be successful. It would also help to ensure that citizens in the east and the west neighborhoods and our Latino majority would be directly represented in the decision-making process of our city. For those who are listening and are not aware, according to the City of Garden Grove website, Latino citizens represent 39.1 percent of the population and is the largest demographic in our city, with 31.1 percent being Asian Pacific Islander and only 26.5 percent being white. The appearance of discrimination against the largest ethnic constituency in our city becomes a fact when one considers the difficulty in raising enough money to compete in city council elections on an equal basis against better-funded candidates, who for the most part are from a higher economic status and largely from central Garden Grove. We're attaching data regarding ward systems in other cities for your reference, and in conclusion, we believe it's time for Garden Grove to address the issue of non-representation of all of our citizens, our neighborhoods at either edge, and the blatant lack of at least one Latino voice on our city council. Ensuring that all voices are heard and that all of our residents are represented should be a top priority for Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Dean Steele.
My name is Dean Steele. I am presently chairman of the Garden Grove Elks Bingo Committee. I have come here with our president, or as we call him, Exalted Ruler, David Stamper. I'd like to speak to you this evening about our bingo program. The purpose of it is to raise funds in order to help local charities. Any profits derived from the program are deposited into a restricted account, separate from our general funds, and spent entirely for charitable purposes. Each month, a report showing the income and where the funds are donated is given to the Garden Grove Police Department. We're being confronted with increased competition for the players, lower attendance and income, along with more requests for donations. The state of California has written a new bingo regulation allowing for games to be broadcast from a remote location, along with offering increased prize money. We've been in contact with that company and explored a program offered by a company called Bingo Innovations out of Ontario, Canada. Or, no, California. California, I'm sorry. Can't read my own writing.
It's just a short distance.
A little bit, yeah.
They both start CA, so understandable.
Yeah, that's what I had. This program links several bingo operations into one program, broadcast over a dedicated television network. This allows them to pull the admission fees for all the players from all the players from all these locations, thereby offering bigger payoffs per game. The local bingo operator receives a fixed percentage of the admissions paid at their location. Also, a fixed percentage of the total admission is used to calculate the values of the games. Payment to the game winners is made by check from Bingo Innovations by certified mail. I happened to play on a Friday night at the Ontario American Legion, and I received a certified letter because I won the following Wednesday. They guaranteed that they would pay within 10 days. I received my money in five. We are requesting a change in the Garden Grove regulation in order to allow us to participate in this program. I do have copies of the new state law, along with answers to many of the questions that people ask, and it was provided by Bingo Innovations, and a model of a revised local law. For your information, if you would like to have it, your consideration be sincerely appreciated, as our current program is in jeopardy and declining. Of course, if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, if you'll leave that with the city clerk, the information that you had, we'll get it later. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peggy Bergen.
Nice, and you look lovely tonight, Dean, in that dress. But basically, just some questions on the different consent items this evening when I was reading through the agenda for tonight. And one of the 4D on the city council consent item, professional landscaping and streetscaping, I did look up who was going to be doing this job. That was one of my concerns when I looked at some of these issues, was where the people were going to be coming from. And I was very, very delighted that all of the places I looked up were from, I would say, an easy drive from Garden Grove. There was no one from, you know, Sacramento or Colorado or something. This, the professional landscaping, basically, this is going to be, cost is not to exceed $120,000, but not out of the general fund, but out of gas tax. So that's kind of nice. That's money we don't have to put out to change the landscaping. Basically, they are taking it, I think, down to more of environmental-friendly landscaping. And, but my question is, this is on Harbor Boulevard, and between Garden Grove Boulevard and the northern boundaries of the city, which would be just past Chapman. Now, is this going to be done before, during, or after all of the hotel activity? Because it seems to me a little bit redundant to be working on the medians of the street, which means you're going to be tearing up all the sides of the road to do this, and then they come along with building the hotels, and there's always quite a bit of distress to the roads while they do that. And will this cost be to include all the work and the plantings, or just pictures and advice on what we want to do? And then the next one was for geotechnical services. This is for E. And there were three different groups mentioned, Associated Soils from Signal Hills, Group Delta Consultants from Torrance, California, and Southwest Inspecting and Testing Incorporated from La Habra. But I was very kind of surprised when I looked up geotechna, the second group, Group Delta, second, where they were from Torrance. But according to their website and their sales promotion, a three-year contract has just been okayed by Garden Grove, the second of their three-year contracts. And since I noticed it was on the agenda tonight as a consent item, I think they're like jumping the gun a little bit, unless it was already ordained before this meeting was set. Then on 4G, we have Theater Robbins Ford in Costa Mesa. You are buying a utility truck for, let's say, $31,000. My issue is, Dina says very faithfully every evening, B-I-G-G, buy in Garden Grove. And undoubtedly, whenever we buy vehicles, you buy them out of the city. And I do know the reason is, it's cheaper. Well, you know what? It's cheaper for me to buy a lot of things out of the city, but number one, I don't want to drive to do it, and number two, I'll buy it here, because these are my shop owners, and these are my businesses, and the tax goes to my city. So I kind of wonder sometimes why, if you bought them faithfully from our dealerships in our town, maybe they would strike a deal with you guys instead of always buying outside of the city. And this one was an item for consideration, and this has to do with the new, no, what is that? Shoot. Modified Alternative Redevelopment Program. But basically speaking, if we want to join in this redevelop, modified redevelopment program and not just opt out of redevelopment entirely, now, this is according to the agenda. So I might have read it a little wrong or something, but this was according to the agenda, what was printed for us to read. Alternative will be, our cost for this year to be paid sometime in October or November will be $8 million to the state to stay in this program, but it is the obligation of the city, not the redevelopment group. Now, we just went through our budget last meeting, and everything was very touch and go, with very little money left over for next year to lead in. Now, $8 million this year, that is a lot of money to pay out of the city to keep in redevelopment. Now, I understand redevelopment is very integral to our financial situation in the city at this point, but it just seems to be quite a bit of money, and I hope that was one of the things that was budgeted into our budget this year, so that $8 million won't have to be pulled piecemeal from other things. And this is, has absolutely nothing to do with Garden Grove. But last, about two weeks ago, I was reading online about this cute little hot dog stand in Hollywood. It was called, let me see here, Molly's Burgers, 82-year-old, 82-year-old business in Hollywood. And once again, guess what it's coming down for? It's coming down for a mega unit. And as I was reading along...
Peggy, can you wrap it up, please?
This was a comment by one of the people that had attended its last day, that it was open. There should be room for places like this here. This is what makes Los Angeles, Los Angeles. A personal assistant who also volunteers at the social services at her church. But that's my comment. Sometimes, we take away these things without finding locations for them before we start the business. They cannot come back, and therefore, we lose our person. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, chairman of the Redevelopment Agency, Mr. Broadwater, and members of the agency. The recent developments in Sacramento have caused me to think about several questions regarding redevelopment. Now, I know that the Redevelopment Agency is in debt. By statute, they must be. Now, if we dissolve the Redevelopment Agency, who is going to pay off the debt? Is that going to be the city? I know the Redevelopment Agency owns many properties. Are those properties going to revert to the state or to the city? Now, if we decide to participate in that new proposed redevelopment process, and it's going to cost the city $8 million to participate, how are we going to recoup that money? And I wonder if the amount of money that the city is going to lose through that process is going to be reflected in our budget in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards that I have, so I'll close all communications. Mr. Broadwater, do you want to, or do you want to go directly to...
You can convene the agency.
Yeah, well, I didn't know if he was... Okay, we can convene the agency then. Go ahead.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development. Mrs. Baylor, we're sure that everybody's here. We've had all communications, but we have not had consent items. Let's go to consent items. We only have one.
One.
We'll approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings. We have no items for consideration. Matters from agency members. Gentlemen, ladies, hearing none. We will adjourn until July 26th. No, no, we won't. We'll adjourn until August 9th, 2011.
Okay, we'll reconvene the council at the record show, all members are present. We'll go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended items 4A through 4L be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or actions requested by a council member.
Move the balance.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, we've received a request from the applicant to continue this item until August 9th.
Okay. Then we'll go to items for consideration.
Your first item is an award of contract to Polaris Engineering for Water Improvement Project, and our new Public Works Director is...
His first time to be late.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, tonight's staff is asking council to approve a construction contract for the installation of over 7,000 feet of waterline in the southern port part of the city between Bouchard and Brookhurst, Westminster and Bolsa. There is a project map in your attached staff report for your reference. The waterlines in this area have been identified as deficient in providing the required fire flow, and this project will bring those flows up to our current standards. On July 12th of this year, staff received 12 qualified bids, and policy engineering was determined to be the lowest qualified bidder with an amount of just over $1.5 million. The project will be funded using water funds and is in our capital improvement plan. No general funds will be used. Should council approve the construction agreement tonight, work can begin in mid-August and should be complete before the city's winter shutdown date in mid-December. This concludes staff's report.
Peggy, any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
7B.
Mr. Mayor, 7B is an amendment to an agreement with Scott Fazekas for Plan Review Services, and Susan Emery is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, each year, staff brings to you consultant contracts for plan check services for our Building Division. We do some of this work in-house. We have a couple of plan check engineers who are capable of doing the work. We hire two consultants to assist with the overflow and with greater, larger technical projects, one being Will Down, that was approved under the consent calendar, and the other being Scott Fazekas, which is presented to you for this evening. Scott Fazekas, the contract amendment is to increase the amount to $500,000 over the previous amount of $250,000, and that's to accommodate the plans that we anticipate coming in for the Great Wolf Hotel. So it's an amount not to exceed. It could come in less than that, and that's all I have. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
7C.
Mr. Mayor, 7C is an amendment to the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to vehicle abatement, and Lieutenant Ben Stoffer is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mayor and council, good evening. This amendment to the Garden Grove Municipal Code is brought about to establish a 10-day abatement policy, and it's something that we've been lacking. As a result, we've been unable to recover all of the possible monies available to us through vehicle abatement processes, through the Orange County Transportation Authority, and it's necessary to enact a 10-day abatement program to rectify that situation. The staff recommends that you introduce and conduct first reading of the attached ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove," amending Chapter 28 of Title 8 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to abatement of abandoned or inoperative vehicles.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Now, if some, if there's a vehicle on the street that has been parked there for some time, and in the past, someone would go out and mark it, and in 72 hours, if it was still there, hadn't been moved, it would be towed. How does this 10-day period impact things?
The 10-day process actually runs coincidentally with the 72-hour process. It's more of a judgment call. We have vehicles that are repeatedly parked in certain locations, such as motorhomes, that we will routinely continue to mark with 72-hour markings, but the vehicles that are not once familiar to the area will be marked with a 10-day abatement, and that'll enact the 10-day process where we send a letter to the landowner and to the vehicle owner, letting them know that the vehicle is there and appears to be abandoned. And if there's no appeal of that abatement process, then the vehicle will be abated after the 10-day process.
Does it apply to private property also?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You mean, like, when you say apply to private property, you mean even vehicles on people's driveway?
Yes. The, well, you have, vehicles legally parked in the driveway won't be, but you're talking about mainly with private property. You're talking about commercial properties with vehicles that have been dumped on them. It's usually not with the owner's consent. The vehicles on property where the owner owns the property would most likely be dealt with, with other municipal codes.
I see. So do we have any way to distinguish that in this ordinance, so it doesn't get applied to private property?
No, it's open to application on private property as well.
So can we, go ahead, and then I'll...
Would it just be more inop, inoperative vehicles for the 10-day, for the private property thing?
Yeah, you could have inoperative, obviously abandoned, vehicles that are blighting the property.
Still on private property, though, but yes, they would fall under that.
Correct. And if you took that away, you wouldn't be able to abate vehicles that were even without the permission of the owner on their property.
Thank you. Mr. Beard, go ahead.
Yeah, a question related to inoperable vehicles on private property. Right now, how are we, how are we addressing that, through code enforcement?
Yeah, mainly code.
And the police that know are not involved at all on private property.
We can be, it depends on the condition of the vehicle, but it's primarily through an obviously abandoned, if it's an obviously abandoned vehicle that meets certain criteria, then we can take it off private property through the police department.
Okay, does this affect anything in the backyard of a residence? If you see something, it doesn't affect anything...
Yeah, that's going to be a code enforcement issue, but it's not something that this section would be used for.
Okay, is there a cost to people whose ownership of the car is total weight? Do they have any costs involved?
If they recover the vehicle, yeah, they're responsible for the tow fees and the subsequent cost of that.
Okay, if they recover the vehicle.
Right.
If they say they have all these inoperable vehicles on the front yard, let's say, or in a commercial setting, and they just take it away, there's no cost to them whatsoever?
Yeah, the tow companies are going to lien sale or junk the vehicle, depending upon its condition.
And the county, the city is reimbursed through this OCTA program that you're applying for?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm still a little bit not clear. So for residential properties that have, like, cars in the driveway, we will use this code against them if we wanted to?
No, again, that's primarily going to be addressed through more of a code enforcement action, but you could have a residential property where somebody else has left the vehicle, not the property owner, a tenant, somebody else who does not have permission to leave the vehicle there, and this would still give us the ability to abate that vehicle.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that, I just won't want the, this code to be used on residential property where they have their own vehicles there intentionally, and we have other codes to take care of that.
Yeah, if they're not in violation of the other municipal codes, they will not be subject to this enforcement.
Okay, I just want to make sure of that.
Okay. Nothing further, I'll entertain a motion.
More to issue.
Second.
A motion, a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, 7C, one, that's the ordinance that you read already, correct?
Yeah, just read, yes.
That Lieutenant Stoffer did. 7D.
7D, Mr. Mayor and council, are two items regarding the redevelopment, opting in back into the redevelopment activities, and Jim Delalanga is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. The purpose of this report is to request the city council to consider, one, a non-binding resolution indicating the city's intention to enter into the state's alternative voluntary redevelopment program, and, two, an ordinance whereby the city agrees to comply with and participate in the state's alternative voluntary redevelopment program. On June 28th, 2011, the governor signed ABX 1-26, the Dissolution Act, and ABX 1-27, the Voluntary Program Act, to address the state's budget crisis. The Dissolution Act immediately suspends all new redevelopment activity and dissolves redevelopment agencies as of October 1st, 2011. The Voluntary Program Act allows redevelopment agencies to avoid dissolution by entering into the alternative voluntary redevelopment program. Entering into the program requires a substantial annual payment to the county auditor controller. To avoid dissolution of the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development by October 1st, 2011, the city must enact an ordinance whereby the city agrees to comply with, participate in, and make payments prescribed by the program. To the extent necessary and in abundance of caution, the city should also consider adopting a non-binding resolution expressing the city's intention to enact the ordinance, which suspends the dissolution of the agency until November 1st, 2011, thereby giving the city an additional month to adopt the ordinance. The initial payment from the city is estimated to be approximately $8 million for fiscal year 2011-12. The finalized amount will be published on August 1st, 2011 by the state director of finance. This payment will be an obligation of the city, and after the enactment of the ordinance, the city and agency will enter into an agreement pursuant to the new legislation to allow the agency to transfer an amount of funds up to the amount of the payment made by the city to the county. For this initial payment to the city, the agency will be permitted to use its 2011-12 allocation to the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund and other available agency funds. The Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund allocation for 2011-12 is estimated to be around $5 million. The remaining balance of the initial opt-in payment will be in the form of a loan from the city's general fund. The new law also requires that all money received by the city from the agency be used for purposes of financing activities within the redevelopment area that are related to accomplishing the redevelopment agency project goals. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the attached non-binding resolution indicating the city's intention to enter into the voluntary program and pass the ordinance, and introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Garden Grove Electing to Comply With and Participate in the State of California's Alternative Voluntary Redevelopment Program," contained in Part 1.9 of Division 24 of the California Health and Safety Code. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer questions.
What happens if we don't enter into this?
As of, well, if you don't adopt the ordinance or adopt the resolution, as of October 1st, 2011, redevelopment is completely dissolved.
Okay, and what are the negative impacts that has on a city like ours? Okay, and what are the negative impacts that has on a city like ours?
The... But on the positive side, all of the obligations you currently have, all the enforceable obligations, will be paid off with tax increment. All of the assets of the agency will go to the successor agency, which is permitted to be the city, and then the city will cash out those assets and pay the money back to the county for the benefit of the school district. So everything that the agency has will then, basically forever, go indirectly to the local school districts.
So it pretty much hinders what you can do as a city after that, then you're...
Well, you have no ability...
That's right.
You have no tax increment, so you have no ability to do redevelopment.
So to do some of the good things, for examples of what we've done here?
Yeah, you can't do anything.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Do both these issues need to be voted on separately?
Yes.
I move 7D, one.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
I'll move 7D, two, also.
Second.
We got to read it? Or did he read it?
He already read it.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second for 7D, two, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
The ordinance is for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, that's paramedic tax override for fiscal year 2011-12, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by an ad valorem tax override and the setting of the tax rate of said override.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we do have a closed session item, but prior to that, any comments from council?
Well, there's several things made, brought up tonight, especially award elections. I'm not sure that it takes a charter city to do that, but I do believe it does. And also, it was said that it makes it easier for somebody to get elected. Well, it makes it easier for certain people to get elected, but it also makes it much easier to recall them, too. So, I mean, it's a two-sided sword. I wonder how many people were out in front of this fire station motel when we made it go away, saying, gee, we ought to save that and take it somewhere and put it somewhere? Or some of the motels on Harbor Boulevard that were just nothing but prostitution, say, we ought to keep that? I think we've done redevelopment very well in this city, and I don't think we've hurt anybody, certainly not intentionally. And I think we've paid more than we should have for a lot of properties, taking care of people, making them happen. I... Sorry that a hot dog stand has to go, but sometimes it just... It may be 82 years it outlived itself, but I just don't see that we have made anything go away that didn't need to be go away. I would like to say congratulations to Member Barrett and his wife Cheryl. 20 years of that it?
Years.
20 years. That's a long... 20 years was 20 years ago for me. Anyway, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wynn.
Yes, just a reminder that for public work on the Dawson Street off of Westminster, we said, once we passed the budget, we would look into a light at Dawson and Westminster. Because it's a very dangerous intersection. Also, to remind the residents that we have a great summer at Atlantis Park, especially for children under 10. There's a lot of activities there. There's not many places where little toddlers can go, but that's one safe area you can go in to every day. And thank you, staff, for explaining the alternative voluntary redevelopment program. I think that should answer some of Mr. Mitchell's questions regarding where's the money coming from and where is it going. So the state, again, is going to take $8 million of our money, and it's kind of like, if we don't give it to them, anything in the future, that's it. We're not going to get anything else, so I think we have to surrender this time to the state for our future revenue. Also, congratulations to Chris and Cheryl. You look like you're 30-something.
You know.
So remember to buy in Garden Grove this summer. We have a lot of stores that just opened up and a lot of deals, especially in the Garden Grove and Harbor area. They have a lot of brand-new stores, and I've been there. I think they're doing very well. See a lot of people out there shopping, and it's fun shopping out there.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I'll just add a couple of things on the redevelopment, the voluntary redevelopment program. It's a shame that the state of California, due to their own poor choices in managing their own budget, have to dump off problems like this on the cities and do a money grab to try and balance their own budget. That's what this is. It's the state doing a money grab, trying to take money out of redevelopment and other pockets. And it's unfortunate that we're forced under extreme duress to agree to a quote-unquote voluntary program to join back into redevelopment under these terms and under these circumstances. But we have to... We have too much at stake. We've got too many projects in the works that the city relies upon, and these projects produce a multiplier effect for the benefit of the city, and so we need to keep going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Beard.
Yeah, I want to concur with the sentiments of the council members on redevelopment. I think the word extortion comes to mind when I think of it, but it's something we have to do to keep it going, keep our projects going. So it's unfortunate, but we have to do what we have to do. Related to the Fourth of July that just came up, it was... I had the good fortune of going on a police ride-along, and I saw a part of the city I hadn't seen before, celebratory. A lot going on out there, and it was fun, exciting, and I guess some illegal fireworks were... Citations were made, which is good, but overall, there's a lot of fun and energy and excitement, at least on the west end of town where we were at. A lot of fireworks, legal fireworks, that is. So that's the way to do it, too. Make it legal, make it fun, celebrate the Fourth of July and all. I enjoyed it, and I thank the police department for allowing me to go along. Speaking of the police department, I just read in the paper that we have a national night out for crime, so it's coming up in August, so that's a good thing to participate in. I know I'm going to. I did about five, within the last five, 10 years. I've done it a few times. It's a good way to reintroduce yourself to your neighbors, your neighborhood, and the police department, and see old friends, make new friends, so I encourage people to do that. And I want to thank the council members for your best wishes for my anniversary coming up. It's been 20 years. My 20-year-old bride, and I want to wish her... Well, thank her and tell her I love her, and it's been a great 20 years, and I look forward to the next 20 to 30 years with her. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Happy anniversary. I went out today. One of the things I do as a mayor's link, I go to a lot of the businesses and actually tour the businesses, shake hands with the workers and the owners, and try and find out if people are... Especially the smaller business people in this economy, which is even more crucial, how they're being treated, how they view the city permit, the process that they've had to go through and everything. And I probably went to about 15 businesses today at East Gate Plaza. And by the way, they're still... They're thriving pretty well out there. I've had a couple of businesses that have closed, but they have a variety of stores out there, and they're hanging on. And again, in this economy, it's really tough, and I kind of heard from about five or six of them something that I heard... Usually I hear when I go to these businesses, but every so often, somebody will pop up. There was a gentleman that has been at East Gate Plaza 18 years, and before that, he was in Huntington Beach, and he said, you know, nobody from Huntington Beach has ever even contacted me to find out if I'm happy, or... He said that's one of the reasons that I left. And I got the same story from some other people that had many, many years in other cities, and these aren't people that just came here three months or six months ago. There was another business that'd been there 17 years. And you're right, you know, you sometimes don't see as much of the city as you should because you find out at different times of the day or night when you go. You see there are certain businesses open, certain that are not, where they are, where they're located. And I was really happy to talk to these people today, and they're hanging on, and that's good because they think they're going to get through this, but not one of them had complained about the city. And that, to me, is awesome because that means that not us up here, we can take a little bit of credit, but it's really the people that they have to deal with day-to-day, whether it's at the counter in the police department or through the city clerk's office, city manager's office. I mean, he gets... He has to deal with an awful lot of things, too, and a lot of times, it comes from me. You know, Matt, will you take care of this? But I'm proud of our city, and I think that we all up here representing the city should be so, too. One other thing, you know, I think we might consider is maybe every quarter or every six months, whatever timeframe we come up with, is we take this video, and we have several videos here of redevelopment, that show what the Fire Station Motel looked like in its heyday, when the heyday being the bad side, when it was prostitutes and drugs and everything else, or the Pitcarin Motel, or many of them that were in between there. These are places that, if they were still here today, unfortunately, people wouldn't be shopping in that area of the city. A woman wouldn't even be walking down Harbor Boulevard, and that has changed so much. And I can say it from my experience, having been a police officer and made a lot of arrests over there, believe me. The police department is your first group of people that are going to be able to tell you when an area changes, when they don't have the calls for service, when they don't have the arrests, when they don't have all those things. And they've been replaced by not just beautiful buildings, not just really great-looking hotels. These are hotels that bring in revenue, that support the city, that pay for some of the services that in other cities you might pay more for because they haven't had the foresight to work and develop these projects and bring them to Garden Grove. I mean, that's why everybody up here, you've heard us at one time or another, talking about the Water Park Hotel, because this is really something we really want for our city, and it's something that is great for the tourists. It brings money in, and you know what? I'm hoping that some of the people would even, from Garden Grove, would stay there themselves to find out what it's like overnight and take their kids to it and find out what a controlled environment where your kids are around and there are people watching. You don't have to sit there and watch every moment, even though you should. I mean, you've got to be vigilant if there are swimming pools and things like that around, but yet, it's a safe environment, and it's something that upgrades the area, and it brings revenue to the city. We would be in a lot worse shape, I guarantee you, if we didn't have those hotels. The hotels that were there generated very little money because they were never full because of the type of clientele that they had, and it was really, it was prostitutes and drug dealers. But I know that... I was talking to somebody today about Trader Joe's, and that's a story I'm not going to tell it again. I've told it many times, about trying to get one from Garden Grove, to Garden Grove. But it's not always, why can't you bring them? We want this one here. They have to want to come, and they want to come, and they want to build, and they want to trade in a city that's progressive, in a city that brings tourism here, because that's customers for a lot of other businesses, too. But this doesn't come without redevelopment. And you can talk about principles, you know, somebody wants to hold out on something for a principle, and, you know, that may be fine, but there are also times when you look at it and say, how does this principle infringe on the principles of other people, too? So those things have to be taken into consideration. And you know what Bruce said? He's right. I mean, there have been people that have probably gotten a lot more money because the city bought their property to develop or redevelop than they would have certainly on the open market. So the majority of the time, it's a win-win for everybody. And you may be sitting at home, but remember, when the police officer's out here doing his job, or the firefighters out here doing his job, or the city people that are issuing permits, everybody's doing their job, it's because we have the people, because we've generated the income that pay the salaries. And it's a lot of work, but I'll tell you, that's why I think if people saw this video again every so often to see how bad things were, I don't think there's one person, honestly, that would look at it and say, gee, I wish they'd have left it the way it was. I mean, if you say that, well, I guess I probably couldn't convince you of anything. We are... Let's see, we're going to adjourn to closed session. A conference with legal counsel pending litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, all of us versus City of Garden Grove. And I will report back if there's any reportable action. And when I adjourn the council meeting, it'll be adjourned to July 26th. No, it won't.
19th. Is that on it?
Yeah.
Excuse me, July 19th.
July 19th.
See, I'm human, too, even I make mistakes. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. (gunshot)